Thank you. In the Minnesota December 19 meeting, is there a motion for approval?
To move.
All yours. Okay, we had this. Back in 2021, it came back with all kinds of revisions. Christopher Moses, 3570 Forestin Road, it's right outside of this Palmer. They, two acres or two lots, this thing, they want to combine this lot. However, when he is back in 2020. He recommended approval and only. One lot, that's it, shown here and we're wondering. It's one of the Republicans lot consolidation is an existing, I'm through brush and we're to cover land track, site to moderate slowly distance around. Lot two is an existing residential commercial land track, modern solving this route. Mill Creek traversing both lots and there's existing structures dwelling, garage and shed. By lot. Plan is submitted is in RC Rural Conservation District in a B C Village Center. A single family detached dwelling is permitted use in an R C district and a use permitted as a planned development in the village, the village center. I was lot one at the combination with lot two is 1.0518 acres. The combined acreage meets the village center of district medium block size requirements, but does not meet the rural conservation district minimum size of two acres. This is, this is village center and the rest is all R C. It's right in the middle of nowhere, they should change their zoning. Prose and existing dimensional zoning information for existing lot one and two and the proposed consolidates. Yeah, consolidate consolidated lot shall be provided on the zoning regulation table. And all street access points have a clear sight triangle, intersection streets. They don't have the clear sight triangle, any of the driveways going into the lot. Project name should be revised, lot annexation subdivision Christopher W. Moses and Angeles R. Moses are both the owners of the lot. Certification of the accuracy plan survey statement on the plan not signed by the surveyor. Existing and proposed eventual information for lots to a consolidated lot shall be invited in zoning regulations. Listing of any previous zoning approvals not shown waivers granted by the board of supervisors shall include the date the waivers were granted. And he's listing what five waivers down there and he put one statement there, figured they're gonna approve all the waivers and then just sign one. One date and sign it, not gonna happen. Certification of ownership acknowledgement of plan statement not signed. Existing manmade features within 100 feet of the proposed project, project site boundary as well as within the project site not shown. Property boundary existing and proposed of all lots involved with the project shall be provided with bearings and distances and current data on the field survey. There's a 33 foot right away for Forest Inn and which is a state road. Legal right away shall be confirmed with Penn dot district 50 archiver bearings and distances for the proposed property lines. Along the furniture of the lot provided and that every of the lot updated accordingly. All survey monuments and markers found and set not shown. It's shown the plan existing lot one has a set pin on the northeast corner. And what they did, but the property line is shown intercepts the edge of the right way. Issue with that. And the property corner exists on a common boundary line between lot one and two and I have a closed markup. For your comment. But who owns this parcel right here? You know, you don't show it. Let's see. In addition, plan lot line adjustment, lot annexation subdivision. Or Ragnes Clangle and Christopher Moses dated December 4th, 2020, recorded March 12, 2021. In map book five, two sixty, create lot two of this proposed plan. The record plan shows an adjacent parcel to the north as one parcel, parks parcel, 29C 33109 owned by Teresa Fronheiser, not as lot one's proposed. Plan as existing documentation to be provided by the applicant and a note provided on the plan to conform how and when lot one was created. Without submission of a minor subdivision plan for review recommendations by Carney County and planning commission and lower Comanche Township. Street right away line adjacent to the lot shall be shown and plan would meet the bounds, the property line for existing one and the proposed and solid base. Solid lot is shown to be within the Penn dot legal right away. The future right away for Forest Inn should be shown. And township may not even agree to accept the right away as an easement and the plan should be revised accordingly as a stone of plan. Is noted that the existing dwelling and a shed is shown a planner located within the future right away. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the solid requirement and I have deferred, we recommend defer recommendation to the township engineer who I've been discussing this whole plan with. Existing easements and adjacent and through lots with with provided shall be provided and should be shown in the plan. Labeling and dimensions for the drainage along Mill Creek along should be shown and the actual easement being provided. Copy of the proposed deed should be provided copies of this the any zoning decisions either obtained in the past or in the current projects shall be provided. Copy of Penn dot highway occupancy permit for the existing driveway shall be invited. And again, I defer, he's asking for. Approval and waiver again, I defer to the lower Tomansic Township engineer. Clear side triangle for the existing driveway and associated driveway clear side triangle note should be invited. Again, they're asking for a waiver and I would recommend deferring to the lower Tomansic Township engineer. Required available site distance for the existing driveway and the speed limit of the intersecting road shall be invited in the plan. And again, they're asking for a waiver from this requirement. Again, I would recommend deferment to the. Township engineer. FEMA detailed floodplain and flowway mapping enclosed delineation lines shall be shown and labeled in the plan for Mill Creek. Where's it at? All these structures are located within the 100 yard, 100 year floodplain. And I have a map that I enclosed. And the panel number and map number should be, the firm that they're calling now online, we show them plan. Survey closure computation will be required. And for future plans that have bought existing streets right away, showing the plan shall be labeled future right away. Plan no tension revise from insuperable to inseparable. Plans say route 20001 for Forest Inn should be shown the plan and I would recommend conditional community judgment. Is there a motion for approval of conditional plan rejection? Make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll find rejection approved. Next one is easy one, it's golden old subdivision. Require the owner that if there is rephase plans that were done way back in the eighties, all they want to do is take. These three lots duplex and propose single, single family homes. And. The only thing that required this, they need a new NITC's permit because the old one expired on nine to 2008. And talking with. Breanna former down at the conservation district, they just applied for it. And this is part of that permitting process. I would recommend additional plan of food and then application. Any discussion? Is there a motion for a condition?
I'll make that motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Additional plan approval. And the next one is. Located at. 50 East Cherokee Trail. It's a combination of two lots, 3.92 acres, existing residential pressure would recover land track. The plan is submitted does not conform to minor plan requirements, so two 1016 plans exempted from standard procedures. And plans as submitted for our review has a planned date of February 20th, 2022. All this information on here is outdated according to their order. I pointed out therefore, you the plan is submitted has been conducted using current ten forest township plan of El Torres number one. Approved adopted enacted and codified on December 4th, 2023. The. Lot is combined in 0.92 acres and the requirement is two acres. If they do not meet the zoning requirements, however, the proposed lock consolidation improves an existing non-conformity. The existing residence structures located within the 50 foot yard, front set yard setback. And a small shed in the plan of Buzz Land with Raymond ruined deep and may be required to be relocated and zoning bearings may be required. And the plan is submitted does not conform to the drawing scale. Feet, one inch, 20 feet, 10 inches, 10 feet is submitted as one inch, it was 30. Solo 21016 is shown the plan, the applicant was granted a waiver and I talked to Penn Forest Township supervisors and they granted no waivers for this plan. And he's referencing the old 331 requirements. And the plan should be revised in the correct section of the Penn Forest solo and the relief granted by the township in the form of waiver. Should be noted, the plan including a description of the relief and the date of the board meeting. When the relief was granted, space not left in the lower left side for the reporter of deeds and signatures. Again, here we go with this significant natural features including but let's a floodplain. And trees of greater than eight inches in caliber not shown. Again, he's saying that they were granted a waiver. That wasn't reviewed back then in 2020 and he should. Put the proper 21016 C 31 on the plan and get the waivers granted again. Recorder of these requires original signatures on all and any maps to be recorded. And they're often not except any photocopy or duplication of signature plan should be revised to show original signatures. And current dates placed directly on the plan in following locations. Order certification certification of accuracy plant title block and the signature block. Authorizing the township officials going to lots. In addition, the notary seal of John Jones Jr. Notary public is shown the plan has expired. On August 17th, 2023 should be left maybe and I would recommend. Additional plan rejection. Any discussion? Is there a motion for a conditional plan rejection? The motions.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Additional plan rejection. And the last one is this is located at 20. 90 Whittington Circle and Forest Township. And this is the Tomansic Trail, it's locked offline revision. It's 0.6696 acres. They require two acres out in Penn Forest Township for R2 low density residential. Does not meet them except their lot size requirements, however, who's not performy. It's all those statements signed by the surveyor testing for the survey not shown. And much divided, okay, contour elevations at vertical intervals, but not more than two feet through land with average natural slope of 5% or less not shown. You're showing contours, but he has no contour elevations on it with whatever the opener should be. Again, space on lower, lower edge for the recorder of deed signature certification of ownership not signed. Signature block authorized staffing consultants entered upon the site for inspection and conducting your review. And determining consistency with the requirements to depend for a solve of not executed. Applicant name on the signature block should be revised to the correct applicant owner. We had this one way back. Last year. New lot number shown the plan is in conflict with the combined lot number 96. Eight A is shown the plan, survey computation should be provided draft D's not provided original signatures. And again, I would recommend doing this one conditional plan of. Any discussion? Is there a motion for a conditional plan approval?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No plan approval. The new, new maintenance garage, car, yeah, truck wash facility, electrical buildings. Parking lot, they're just gonna take the old site. And abolish everything on that site. What 20 some sheets, 15 sheets. Borough engineer in this one.
Ivan, does it include a salt storage shed?
Salt storage and brine storage, two different separate ones, they point that out on my review.
Okay.
It's demolition removal of the existing Penn dot maintenance facility construction of a new 40,104 square foot government service building. Here. Yeah, containing 14,120 square feet of office space and 25,984 square foot of a vehicle repair facility. The following support buildings are also proposed, there's a 2,960 square foot truck wash. 2989 square foot prime storage building, 305 square foot salt storage building. 560 square foot electrical rooms and a 1,040 square foot storage tank area. A total of a paved parking lot with an area with 32 parking spaces, which includes 3 ADA handicap accessible parking spaces. Are provided in addition, stormwater management facilities will also be provided. Access to the site will be provided by a 30 foot access drive from Ninth Street. Ninth Street P A State Route nine, zero nine oh two. And A Street. There's municipal water is sort proposed and it's an existing Penn dot maintenance facility, slight to moderate slow distance route. On-site investigation revealed structures under proposed, a lot nobody provides for a plan approved with notice. The plan is submitted, should have been submitted as preliminary plans for major subdivision land developments. And requires a preliminary plan submission, review and approval before a final plan can be submitted. They, they state. Submit this as a preliminary final plan and I plant that out. The final plans for major subdivision land development states and applications, the final plan will put it only filed. Only when all following conditions have been met and. The plan has to be granted unconditional preliminary plan approval and according with 19618. Now conditions established by the borough council for the preliminary plan approval will be filled by the applicant before final plan approval. And I pointed out the applicant should request a waiver from the solid requirement. And I also pointed out that further review of this. Plan submitted throughout by us as provided for following comments. They have it, they were granted variances from the zoning and subdivision. The maximum building height is required, they took 42.5, they ran the variance. The front minimum front yard from a curb, curb line is supposed to be 50 feet and they grant 13. Point three, but however, on the plan, they only show 13.1, which is a comment I have. If. And it was granted November 7th, 2024. Highly proposed walls and fences not to exceed, there's walls all around here. Not to exceed six foot in height above the natural grade. On, on, on either the proposed walls or fences should be shown in site plan. And plan sheet eight to ensure compliance with the height requirements. If building mounted satellites are proposed, a note should be provided on the general sheet two stating no buildings. Mounted satellite antennas shall extend past the perimeter of the building or extend more than four feet above the height of the building. The solars, if accessory solar collectors are proposed, a note should be again provided on the plan. General note two to clarify the proposed use to the solar collectors, they clarify conforms to zoning code standards. And a note should be provided on the plan to clarify the proposed use of the solar collectors. Parking and access area shown on plan sheet six include details pedestrian access. Dropping it here and they have a curb line, but they have. Handicaps. Laws here, but how are they gonna get over the furries? The intended shall be to facilitate pedestrian access and provide saving convenient circulation from parking areas to the government service building. They provided ADA compliant access to the government service building from the parking area and from the public sidewalk along Ninth Street. That's not ADA. Any structure building which is erected, converted or enlarged shall be divided with all street parking space is adequately served each use. The required number of all street parking spaces are calculated based on the square feet of the gross floor area for each use on the site. The office space, they require one space, they require 57 spaces, vehicle repair facility. One space for 250. Square feet of gross floor area, they need 104 and then Brian salt storage buildings, they'll need one space for 4,000. Square foot gross floor area and the same thing with the electrical room, one space for 4,000 square feet of gross floor area. Which comes to a total of 163. And general notes, two indicates 32 spaces are provided and they will, it will be required, the zoning going, a variance will be required. Consistent with the required 163 parking spaces above the number of 80A spaces required would be six spaces. The number of ADA spaces provided is three, again, they're gonna need zoning variances. Location and size for all, a street loading area is not provided in plan sheet six. And then in addition, loading facility shall be located either side of the rear of the building and screen in accordance with the zoning. Section 21860 appears that the proposed loading facilities are located in the front yard setback. And parking setbacks are required to be a minimum 10 feet from the public road right away. Of A Street and with a landscape buffer at a minimum of five feet from the property lines and setback is shown a plan is six. 7.1 feet from A Street right away. And this is, this is all zoning now, this is not subdivision land development. Zoning variance will be granted, was granted by the Heightborough on November 7th to reduce the proposed parking setback. The 7.1 feet from the A Street right away, this will comply. Proposed area for adequate snow storage and removal, the entire facility is not shown on plan sheet six. General note two states excess snow and parking facility plot to northwest corners up here at the. Of the site, but does not access snow, does not address snow removal and storage of the entire site. Names of the joint structures and. Structures open space easements right of ways, et cetera, within 200 feet of land development, facts not shown in contact plans. Gate three. Building down here. Parking, parking lot area and was an office here. And some of the areas over here and. Landscape plan not provided. They're gonna have to landscaping for the land development shall comply with the requirements of 19659 landscaping requirements for the Lane Borough subdivision. And land development ordinance. Documentary evidence shall be invited to the Heightborough engineer demonstrating that proposed use of the truck wash and vehicle maintenance garage. Will not violate and comply with the noise standard set forth in zoning 21855. Okay. Plan note should be provided on general note plan sheet, state lighting for the parking. And loading and loading horizontal surface areas shall be aimed straight down and meet the IE SNA full criteria. Illumination projected from the project site onto a residential use at no time exceeds 0.1 foot candle lighting plan sheet design hand. Will be seen that limit and. On this side, they assume living going over to the national board. 0.7, 0.5, so some of these homes are gonna get the lighting. The parking lot luminaries should not be mounted in excess of 20 feet above the finished grade. As shown in the light street detail sheet 15, parking lot luminaries are supposedly mounted on 35 foot mounting poles of again, are gonna need zoning variances. Electrical feeds for lighting standards should be run underground, not overhead and should be in accordance with the National Electric Code Handbook. The location of all that feature will be shown in lighting plan where parking luminaries and electrical feed should be shown in utility plan sheet six. Certification for proposed lighting and arrangements on the site. All, all the lights on the buildings, all the details, all the mounting should be added. While activities involving possible contamination of surface or groundwater from the storage of brine and salt. The truck wash building and the vehicle maintenance facility shall be divided with adequate safety measures to prevent such contaminations. Mitigation measures for the storage of brine and salt, the truck wash building and vehicle maintenance facility shall be shown. Detailed and described on submitted plan sheets. Water service details should be reviewed and approved by the Heightborough Authority as well with the, the Heightshire Authority. Approve all the. Proposed storage connections. Borough Council Planning Commission or zoning hearing board may require a developer to provide, prepare and submit. The traffic input, input study, impact study. For any residential use. Involving the initial disturbance, when they're. Abolishing this whole site, they're gonna have a lot of trucks coming in and out and they're gonna. They're gonna need an initial disturbance. They're going to need an initial disturbance and, and construction fencing around the whole site. It requires NIPSE permit. Waste container or dumpster areas for the site, including string, should be provided on the plan sheet six. Again, they might, the, the Borough Council, Planning Commission, or zoning hearing board may require a developer to prepare and submit. An environmental impact statement for any non-residential use involving initial disturbance. Of the eighty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty more square footage in the surface area. And for non-residents to use involving or initial or cumulative construction installation replacement of. One acre square footage more in buildings. The plan sheet six. Shows a truck wash building located near the fifteen foot yard setback line. And zoning requires it to be set back a minimum of thirty feet. Again, zoning variances may be required. Wash facility located within, should not be located within any two hundred feet of any R one, R two, or R three district. And shall not operate between the hours of nine P M and seven A M. Plan note should be added to the general note sheet two and made a condition of final plan approval. Zoning two eighteen one twenty-nine B four requires that all new and used tires and parts shall be stored within a completely enclosed dwelling. Or area contained by, contained by a solid fence and revised screening. But a note case such outdoor storage exceeds two hundred and fifty square foot area. And the plan note should be added on the general note sheet six. That's all zoning. Now we go into the land development oriented view, they don't have a, they have a. Sort of a Russian control plan submitted. But it contacted Carlin County Conservation District, it hasn't been submitted to them yet. It's in there, censure blocks will be Height Borough Planning Commission Chairman, Secretary, not provided in the plan. Owner affidavit, same and duly acknowledged for an officer authorized, taken, signed by the owners. Not signed and notarized. Property boundary and property topography certification of the registered professional surveyor. Non-signed seal and signed seal, plan certification. Of the regular, a registered professional engineer responsible for the plan, not signed sealed. Permanent reference monuments. Not shown on the plans. Third site triangle for the proposed access drive not shown in plan. Location and type of permanent lines that have been sound or set in place not shown. General note should be added to the plan, surveyor's certification. Property shown in this plan is under and subject to the Height Borough zoning ordinance amended. And all cases of erosion, sedimentation, control plan approved by the Carbon County Conservation District. Shall be required as conditioned to the issuance of building permit. And they need a copy of the adequacy. Approve a letter, they need a developer agreement. They need. Stormwater provisions. The borough engineer. Completed through another five pages of that. Their recommendations. Not included in this. Solar erosion control plan, again, advocacy letter, national pollution discharge elimination permit. Landscape plan is required, the fire access, access roads and fire lanes shall be invited within all major subdivisions and land developments in accordance with the. Minimum standards set forth in the section, the Height Borough Fire Chief should review the plan before plan approval. Plan sheets are submitted. Are thirty by forty-two and. Solid required, no plan sheets larger than twenty-four by thirty-six and there'll be a solid requirement was required. No deep, deep restrictions or covenants not provided, written, again, a point on original signatures and seals. And then on sheet nine, when. Review recommendations, comments provided by the Height Borough engineer and. Again, basically, list utility providers, emergency telephone, contact numbers, any required and variances and coordinates numbers. Permanent effects around the limits of disturbance for safety and security during construction. Building address line location shall be provided in plan. Label the proposed square south of the electrical building. I'll leave squares down here, it's not labeled, where are they? Proposed ADA ramps, the crosswalks shall be invited all driveway threshold to the site. ADA ramp at the corner of the bridge and nine street shall be updated to meet current ADA standards. The grading plan in previous areas in excess of four percent longitudinal slope, consider using vein grades. Efficiently capture this runoff in the proposal, which is just like. Directing the water into these inlets. Inlets along the southwest driveway along the five hundred and nine contour. We get the grading plan now. Basically, what that comment says is that they should be double, double. Inlets. Because water coming down. On, on two A Street. The possibility could run past those, those inlets.
Where, where's A Street? Which is the first street. Nice, first street, ninth street. We've got A Street.
I say streets down here. Or Bridge Street, A Street. I hear you're saying. Single inlets. Let's see here. Runoff may be directed. From here. The way they have it rated, it might run into these open doors on the electrical room, they should be revised. Elevations to the west and south. Yes. May be directed, items need to the west and south, the electrical bill needs clarification, detailed ratings. Proposed rant. We're not even on. Water pipes exiting the water. The meter pit should be clarified, the plan, the plan shows one pipe exiting the meter pit. Then branching into four, it's the P I T service for the truck wash. And six C I Ps fire service for the main building and a four inch water main for the. And they, it needs clarification. Label size and certain depth of cover for proposed electrical lines that are run throughout the site. And the sand. The sanitary sewer line where it is located within five foot horizontal, governing stormwater management plans or bases. Shall be encased in concrete to adequately protect the pipes from infiltration. High in material, the slope of all products, proposed roof leaders aren't shown. Cementation should be invited for the stormwater pipes. Light standards are, a significant number of light standards are located on top of all is up to twelve feet high, notes should be provided in plan indicating the light levels. Showed in the planner depicted, considering the change in elevation from bearing heights and light standards. Profiles, invert elevations for pipe entering and exiting the stormwater management basin shall be listed. Location electrical line crossing between the O C S ten and five oh one inlets, five oh two not shown in plan. Location of the water line, gas line, and fence slide fence crossing between inlets three oh eight and three oh nine, not shown profile. Roof hat leaders entering into applicable structure and provide inverted elevation for connection to each. Applicable structure. Sanitaries, the location of all electrical lines crossing on the applicable profiles. On the. Proposed truck wash profile, label all oil separators and provide rim elevations and inverted elevations. In and out of them on the applicable profiles. Location, elevation of Dixon thermal on wide and bridge street on the profile between manhole two, two oh two and two oh one. And the proposed location, elevation of the existing water line on nine street on the profile. On. Between manhole three oh two and three oh one. Site details, they don't have. Deep appropriate details for the ADA ramps, type of ramp. Details are provided for the retaining walls, fence and gate details should be provided in the plan, guide rails, details should be provided for locations where he sits atop. Proposed retaining wall. Or is immediately adjacent to the proposed retaining wall. Details are provided for the proposed concrete steps and handrail if necessary, details are provided from the site work around the proposed emergency generator. Detail for the proposed black poles and the foundation shall be provided in the plan. Roadway, roadway restoration plan should be provided where utilities are entrenched with the roadways. The doghouse sanitary sewer manhole details should be provided for manholes within the roadways. Concrete encased with detail should be provided for utility lines, these can be encased. Details for oil separators should be provided in plan, details for proposed clean out should be provided in plan. And consider erosion control matting along the western edge of the driveway to Bridge Street. At the southeast toward the salmon plant and the concrete washout, washout area should be provided in plan. And tree, tree protection sensors should be provided at the, at the drip line of all trees approaching within. The L L D, the existing tree on the residential property to the north. And will show locations of the infiltration testing sites and. I pointed out that we, all these things are, includes any recommendation for approval of the plan development time. And providing these. Comments to the engineer. And that's in the days. I would incredible, well, I had a lot of help. Break and I call up right borough engineer. Two meetings and. Still have most of the comments on this project.
Ivan, I got a few questions.
If I can answer my will.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
So what, what is the timeline Ivan for this? This chapter one oh two review. And, and also with the borough. For a decision.
I do not know.
I, I mean. Obviously, and I don't know if. You know, when was that, that building was built, what, fifty, eighty?
In the thirties.
In the thirties. Okay. And the borough has changed since then, I mean, and just, this is just my opinion. Like, in, within newer modern facility. With the wastewater issues near Mahoney Creek. The salt storage and the brine storage, did they adequately cover? How, how they're going to handle? The, the wastewater?
Yes.
For the wash, the truck.
It's in the post, the. Post, post drainage P S M plan that's going to be reviewed by the County Conservation District and the Height Borough again.
Yeah. So who would, where would I find out from the borough as far as the timeline? Approval of this?
Yes, I give you her phone number. If I have it. Her name is Vanessa. Nedrick, N E D R I C K, she's the engineer, principal regional manager of. Of Remington and Vernick Engineers. And her phone number is. Six ten eight nine four six oh one three.
Six oh one three. So Pendon has. Has contracted this out to the Remington Engineers?
I do not know. They just reviewed the plan and I don't think this plan has been thought up on the. The Height Borough planning meeting yet, might be this week.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
But they do have the P S M. Maintenance facilities and basically. It's a bunch of numbers that they take off a computer and stick it in there. Any visual discussion?
Is there a motion for no recommendation?
Just to review. Just to review and send our comments to. Do the borough be heightened? Notice, Vanessa is getting copied, the applicant's going to get, the state's going to get an, an odd either, their engineer, the Height Borough Planning Commission. Excuse me, the Carbon County Conservation District. Barnik already has my comment, but we. We are probably close to missing.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to forward the comments. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the next one, we had this in May of two thousand and twenty-four. And it was done by Lehigh Engineering. And we had it back in May twenty-four, all they were going to do is combine this lot back here. And they have one, one whole lot, now they want to subdivide. This section out, there's a sign out there, two oh nine, I don't know what, off the space, whatever, but they want to. Subdivide this property. Then they work with private engineering on this one. Keep that there, you should have a copy of this in your, in your cuts, you should have a copy of it here. Alright. The situation, preliminary file, land development plans for the townhouse suite project was previously submitted by. Lehigh Engineering Associates Incorporated to the Carbon County Planning Commission for a review and recommendations. On May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, since that time, the developer has contracted with Design B L D. L L C, a different civil engineering survey form, from. Complete the subdivision and land development pool process, our review has provided the following information for your consideration. The plan that was submitted last time was five pages, this has sort of fifteen. And it's more thorough. It's located at ten fifty-five Interchange Road. C two general commercial, it's one lot combined and create eight point eight six three. And then they're going to take that eight point six three, have lot one A. Where the penthouse. Parts will live and part, part two is two point two three five. Third, construction, construction of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-five square foot, now it's a four story. And town should grant them waiver with more stories instead of three. Which includes ninety-nine parking spaces and four handicapped accessible parking spaces, two loading spaces are also invited to rear. Other proposed building utilities, lighting and landscaping are also proposed, stormwater managed facilities will also be provided. And they're proposing a settlement. On right here. Public municipal source system is proposed on my water. It's an existing vacant land tracks, areas of brushable recovery throughout, cited slight to moderate slope additions to consist throughout the land track. On-site investigation revealed no visible barriers toward development, it was also noted during the onsite inspections. That several M J electric vehicles were entering and exiting through a gate, which is not shown on the plan. Yeah. They called the borough and they had no idea.
That's, that's a temporary staging area for the power line guys.
Yeah, I found that out, but they still have, they, they need a temporary access. Whole process proper.
Oh, they're just going in there.
They're just, they must ram you over. An accessing agreement may be required between property and the property owners, I didn't know what, what the, the, the M J. Electric was, but they do high tension power lines for P P L, floor parks and all that stuff. The Carbon County Plant Commission believes the plan is submitted, does not conform to preliminary plan requirements. It does have, conforms to zoning ordinance. And I pointed out they need, they're going to need a source facility planning module and development, plan condition. And I pointed out they need they're gonna need a source facility planning module land development, plan condition approval, the solar and large control plan. Uh lot line adjustment, they're gonna have to go through that process. Which they pointed out and. The the date, the field work completed, not including on the plan sheet, all these plan sheets. On the. Lot consolidation plan and on the on the. Cover sheet, the survey just inside it, we did put the date down when he we surveyed and that's. That's why I saw that gate and I'm saying, why doesn't it show up here, you said you surveyed this property, why isn't it on there? Date field work completed, not included, shown on the survey surveyors certification sheet. And the applicant response was date field work completed, listed in the project notes and cover sheet zero 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 zero. Survey certification shall be completed uh prior to final plan approval. And again, the uh. This plan note three states, this plan is based on a survey performed by Lehigh Engineering Associates. They've shown a plan, preliminary final plan, preliminary plan for Rock, Press and Howard updated seven twenty one oh four and recorded in Carbon County. Mapbook three uh seven thirty five, horizontal inverted datum on the Lehigh Engineering Plan B. The Lehigh Engineering Associates submitted a record plan dated. April twenty nine, two thousand and twenty four, town play suites. For preliminary final plan review and approval, uh reviews that show different lot configurations. And bearings and distances from preliminary plans uh subdivision from that plan right there. Uh they they show that they own that lot. Yeah, I guess they they. Yeah, we're not, yeah, no, we're we're not. David Bryner, this this change and in uh Nancy Rex. That's changed. And they're and they're using this as their survey plan for this plan here. And Lehigh Engineering. Uh let's see, property lines bearing and businesses discrepancy exists between the recorded map book three uh page, book three, page three seventy five enclosed. And the submitted plan addition, access gate is not shown on the proposed combined lot, provides access on existing stone driveway located on lot one A to joint property of J. F M Gas Incorporated should be located on submitted plan. And I pointed out, note three should be revised to date that the survey was performed for the proposed lots of the subdivision. For this current plan review submission, I don't see how they can come up with like lot two meets and bounds without having it surveyed. He, I worked again with Franklin Township, notice Akoski. Uh carbon engineering on this video. Uh certification of ownership not completed, uh applicant response certification should be completed prior to plan approval. Uh survey certification not completed. Advocate applicant response certification of complete prior plan approval. Applicants should document documentation regarding water table and potential for affecting the groundwater supply for the proposed on home on that well. African response was. Well documentation is being completed, documentation will be provided. The source facility planning module not provided. The applicant response was will serve letter has been submitted to the township for collection and to the water, there's source treatment facilities and the. Facility planning documentation uh documentation shall be provided, they went on my review of the old Lehigh Engineering. They made review, so they they responded, which is basically the same comments. Erosion pollution control must be provided and deemed adequate by the Carbon County Conservation District. Running earth disturbance activities, site copy adequacy letter should be provided before plan approval. And and yes, and P uh the S F S F plans have been submitted to the Carbon Conservation District. And an adequacy letter shall be provided uh. Once the plans have been approved. Drainage water management plan meeting requirements of Franklin Township subdivision land development ordinance and Franklin Township stormwater management. Uh not provided, applicant response comment noted. Development agreement is required to be executed between the developer and Franklin Township prior to final plan approval guarantee. The installation set of programs in accord with township requirements. Applicant response to the development agreement shall be executed prior to final plan approval. They needed an M P D S permit for the associated construction activities. And the applicant response was comment noted. Again, the all land development shall be served by inadequate water supply and developer. Shop provide evidence documenting set out adequacy and again. The response was well documentation is being completed, documentation will be provided. On lot uh water supply systems that comply with the requirements of Penn uh Penn dot environmental protection app and applicable Franklin Township ordinances. The requirement for the installation of on lock well should be noted on the land development plan and shall be required, restrictive components be approved by Franklin Township. Prior to preliminary final plan approval, applicant response was comment noted, please see plan sheet C zero 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 for general panel for. Is there is not, there there is no. It's not, it's not on the plan which they don't put, no uh plan out for. Pass the well should be certified by a licensed well driller, be adequate for the use proposed. And the response is well documentation is being completed, documentation will provided. Required offering parking, loading and unloading facilities shall not be used for any other purpose, including but not limited to sales, display or storage areas. For the parking of any vehicles through which the area was not approved by parking tractor trailers and required passion to be hilarious. Uh response with comment noted and I put the requirement should be noted at the plan on the on plan notes. Firefighting adequate, you know, each land development shall be divided with adequate and reliable water sources for firefighting purposes. And I pointed out plans, Franklin Township fire chiefs should review the plan before preliminary final plan approval. And they noted comment noted and the plan should be sent to the fire chief. And the solo not not sixty six requires that designated uh recreation uh. Offered for dedication Franklin Township and the township may accept the cash contribution and they they pointed out comment noted. And again, I pointed out that uh you're gonna need an access agreement, even if it's temporary for the. You know, required between the property owners. And I would recommend conditional plan approval. But if they note above noted conditions or cannot be adequately mitigated or addressed. Uh before uh preliminary final plan approval, we recommend plan rejection. That's it. And again, I work with the B L D engineer. For the film like this. Bill the twins.
Very exciting.
Conditional plan control. But if we cannot meet the requirements, conditional plan rejection. Any discussion?
So you put that uh in communicating back to them, you're saying conditional plan approval and then you're putting in the caveat. Clearly, so they know. It's only with all those corrections being made.
Yeah, big time survey. They weren't even behind, wow, I keep. On the access agreement, they go, well, I'm just gonna do it. That was the engineering part. Man, there's no discussion? It's up to the Franklin Township.
Is there proof that they own these other lots now that they they didn't own these lots when this was done, but is there proof that they own them now?
Yes, it's it's recorded, I'm trying. But go on that, that claim, yeah, if you notice it. Alright. Is there a motion for a conditional plan approval? And then not possible plan rejection.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All. Alright. Checking the documentation, the uh. Chapter one oh two. Notification for the uh permits were submitted to us and I had a document that is. That it met the uh. Comprehensive plan requirements regarding the. The plan and the act one sixty eight or one sixty seven stormwater management plan to the. Of the county and the last time we updated the uh plan was act one sixty seven plan was September twenty first nineteen ninety five. And I deferred everything to the Carbon County Plan for Conservation District. We have to update that that stormwater plan. Next one is the P P L McAdoo sixty nine caves pillow tap extension to Treskau Locky. And uh it it meets uh. Project consistent with the goals and objectives of the Carbon County County plans and local land use plans and again, I had to point out that. On the on the form itself, that there's approved act one sixty seven stormwater management plan. And is it consistent with the act one sixty seven plan without waivers like. Clear uh Carbon County Conservation District. The other one is the intergovernmental review expense uh. The assistance for small disadvantaged communities drinking water grant program is seven. Seventy four thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars being made available for Penn vessels. And it's. And the other one was applying township municipal authority, they uh applying for. Grants for the uh Hazel Township for the water main. Uh installation and the the uh. Form, they wanted to know if it was in compliance with the farm land preservation. And uh I I pointed out that they sort of you, the office has determined the proposed projects to provide drinking water service. To the service areas of banks township are consistent with the goals of the farm land preservation program, land use plan and with the goals and objectives of the Carbon County. Comprehensive plan greenway plan. That is it. That's all.
Did you mind that, Ivan?
Not done yet.
Not done yet, ah, okay.
And for the township subdivision, voting and subdivision.
Read that whole thing and.
Yeah. You wanna read, go ahead.
Is this a new record?
Broken record. I'm I'm just gonna give it, basically what they're doing is they're they're putting new definitions in. Uh for green Greenland, open space Greenland and. I agree with what they're playing or doing with the uh the conservation. Uh with the solar energy, that's the greenway land. The conservation areas, conservation subdivision design, but basically any subdivision. Gonna have to start coming in and. Be the order in the order of on the conservation subdivision, their street design standards. Blank. And uh the sketch plan, preliminary plan, final plan review is. Finally, they they their only requirement specimen trees and trees of greater than eight inches in caliber. Within the proposed subdivision tract and they're taking out. All the subdivision uh submissions, wooded areas and trees of greater than eight inches in caliber. We, I compiled the list of every subdivision done since two thousand twenty four to twenty three to twenty one. And every meeting and every subdivision plan, the commissioners ran a waiver, the Penfrost Borough Council ran waivers out there for it. Uh let's see, here's the traffic input. Nothing yet. See here, streets uh straight design standards, nothing here. That subdivision land development is owning the same thing, uh they did a complete uh. Uh. I guess rework of this this uh zoning ordinance. The tables allowed for each district, uh wetlands, they added uh wetlands and streams. Speed slopes is under a conservation easement now. Additional uh requirements for planned residential uh development, completely gutted and new ordinances. Uh open uh open two forty thirty nine open space development option. Late revision, now they have a conservation and some conservation and subdivision design. And two forty forty, the development along waterways, lakes and ponds is kept in, but the new one that you want to add. Is 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 also titled two forty forty. Uh apartments on the second and or third floor of commercials. That's something new and again, they added a principal solar facility in additional requirements for specific uses. Design standards for off-street parking, they changed in the landscaping, completely revamped that. And the table six B one in use allowed in each district. And uh I opened it up. And they have it mistitled tables of use allowed in east zoning district and I'm looking for east and west and I realize that it's uh. Misspelled, so that's it and I would recommend approval, I don't have the letters typed up yet. So we we have to make an approval on this. We do, I don't know, the past and the today. But anyhow, I would recommend tabling this. Until I can get my comments, until next meeting.
Motion for that or just?
Yeah.
The, everyone like to table this, is there a motion for such a thing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Consider table?
It'll be our longest meeting ever.
Didn't this follow the shortest ever?
Yeah.
Yes.
Last year and this year.
Almost a journey, I got so numb there for a long time. Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
We're good.
We're good.
Thank you very much, Ivan, what a what a project.
Okay, well, we have another one coming up, maybe next month, that Laura, solar park?
Yes. Yeah, the township, yeah, the township planning meeting was quite interesting about that.
Okay.
We 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 pretty much uh. The pounded the crap out of them.
So a lot of lot of acres, it went way in the spring process.
Yep, yep, yep. The the.